Good evening, welcome to tonight's work session and special meeting. Today is Monday, February the seventh.
Recording in progress.
Today is Monday, February the seventh, between two thousand and five oh one P M. The work session and the city council will now come to order. Work session is up first, following items are filed for consideration of city council. Item one is economic development update. Item two is the outdoor recreation update. So we will begin with the economic development update, and that would be with all the calls. What do you have for this, Wally? We got this picture here.
Yeah, no worries. I hope we can continue about an hour and a half again. And I actually just put this together over the weekend and today because Jared and I have to stand up on Thursday. So I am just coming in to kind of talk with you about some of the some of the updates on what all happened last year, some of the things we have planned for this coming year, and then they just answered any questions that you all might have about projects you're working on right now. So first of all, I just kind of highlighted some of the attention that Trinidad has been getting increasingly for a lot of the exciting development projects that are going off around town, some of the businesses that have moved into the community. And then the biggest thing that changed this last year for our department, we're doing from a department of one, which is me working on it, to now having an additional grant writer and a communications coordinator. And with those two people, we've been able, well, I'll start with each of them. With our communications coordinator, we've had a much better ability to just keep in communication with the public in general. She, her name is Sarah Dixon, and she has been managing our social media platforms, posting to both the visit Trinidad website and our Facebook page and the city of Trinidad webpage or Facebook page. And through that, we've been able to keep meeting minutes for these meetings and other city and study meetings out there more. And just to kind of keep people updated on things that are happening, whether it's a smaller road being closed for some reason or big events that are happening around town or letting them know we're hiring for different positions and stuff. They, Sarah also does a monthly newsletter that we send out to everybody on our business list that has gotten a business license here in Trinidad. And we have a list of community stakeholders that the first Wednesday of every week, she emails all of them asking if there are any updates that they would like to give about things that are happening in town. And then she has two weeks to kind of put together a draft, have me go over it. And then she sends it out to everybody just saying different things that are happening in Trinidad and different messaging that we want to just get out to people. And we welcome people to sign up on that all the time. We try and add additional stakeholders as they become appropriate and say that they would like to be a part of it. So she's been doing a great job. She's only a part-time employee, so she splits her time between working with our department and working at the library where she is part-time there as well. Then we brought on Talita Gillespie this last year to write grants for us. She was originally brought on as a part-time staff member, and she did a really great job. She got several pretty big grants, including she wrote the grant for the space to create build-out projects that we ended up getting over one point five million dollars to complete that project. She also got funding for us to light the River Walk between Linden and Cedar Street. And I think that's a really welcome addition, and she's seeking ways for us to light all the way down the River Walk. We recently brought her on full-time to the city. Those are all projects that she had written for while she was just part-time for the city. Now she's with us full-time and seeking some really big grants right now. She's writing one to create a walking trail all the way up to the Walmart exit from downtown. And some ready grant things for economic development projects that will probably be dedicated towards some of the work we're doing for space to create. And a few other things, she actually gave me a whole list of them for me to include all of them. And then I don't know, I also gave the list of the projects that were funded last year. Cool, yeah, I think both of them have been really great additions to our team. And I feel like we've been able to pursue a lot of means of funds that we may not already, we may not have the resources to get otherwise, and I do think that it's been really great to be able to communicate with the public better. And then for me, I have been working on a bunch of different projects. Specifically, some of the bigger ones that we did last year was the Los Angeles County Gravel Adventure Field Guide. That was our, I'm trying to make it so each year we have a big marketing project. That was the one from 2021. And with that, we hired on a group to put that together. We also received a statewide internet portal authority grant for eighty-five hundred dollars. And with that money, we were able to create an online digital version of that guide. So it's not just a small paper one that we created. It also can be found anywhere on the internet and people can come and look up different reasons they want to come to Trinidad and ride. And but we also produced like a fun little video for that that was promotional for Trinidad. And I think that it's had a lot of great results. I think that we've seen a lot more activity of bicyclists coming to our area to explore it. I actually know of multiple serious bicycle riders that have decided to buy homes in Trinidad and come down here. And so I'm really proud of the work that we did on that. And I've been told by numerous people that it's one of the better city-made publications they've seen. And it's really been allotted a lot of the statewide tourism events that I think too, that they've been holding it up to other communities as an example of a really cool idea for driving tourism into their communities. So that was the big marketing project that we did last year. We also put on a program called the Misifying Entrepreneurship for its third year, which is a just a seminar, multi-day seminar that different business owners can sign up for and come and learn either how to start their business or if their business is ready to scale up. And it's just a good chance for people in the community to get together and learn what other business owners are working on. And it kind of creates a community collaboration. And that went well. I think we are going to do it again this summer. Last year, we had eleven entrepreneurs that were a part of it, and we love to see them all around. And then other stuff I've been working on is just continuing to attract additional businesses to town. Last year, I think we were really successful in that. We had, I can list a bunch of them, but yeah, the Trinidad Lounge, the Mutiny Bookstore, the Sexy Pizza, Grandma's House Brewing, Paradox Brewing. We've really done a lot to put Trinidad out there as an example of where people want to come and invest their money. And we're continuing to do that. We have the Ten Penny Store that's opening up later on this month. That's going to provide clothing right on Main Street. There's the Well, folks that just came here recently, I think, to get their liquor license. And I think you can just look around and kind of see how much our vacant buildings in town are starting to fill up and just the growing excitement about all of that. We have approached other people about coming to town, including natural grocers, and been in contact with them. However, we're told by them that we just still don't have that high enough median income for them to make that type of investment in Trinidad. They want to see a little bit of a wealthier demographic. They feel that's what purchases their products more.
Which grocery was that?
Natural grocers. Yeah. And we had a connection through with them through a development partner that worked on the Sexy Pizza project that owns developing, they have a natural grocers in Lawrence, Kansas. And so we're looking at through that. And so we, yeah, continue to look for folks that want to come and do that. As you know, we did a market analysis about a year and a half ago. That showed that we're losing about seventeen million dollars per year in people leaving our community by groceries. And so we think that that's a perfect demographic or perfect type of business to bring in to fill that need and for them to make some money doing it. So we do have a food co-op that is opening on Main Street in May. And hopefully that will fill some of our grocery needs, but definitely not as large as a Kroger or a natural grocery store. And then on top of that, we, I obviously, I think all of you know that I put on some economic development events and activities to try and draw more people into our community. Last year, we did the Comedy Festival and we did the Spaghetti and Westerns Festival. That was a fun culinary and film event that actually was really successful in bringing a lot of people who don't live in Trinidad to Trinidad for the event. We had over two hundred attendees for the actual festival and over sixty of them came from outside of our region to attend it. Moving forward, and we're going to continue trying to attract new businesses. Like I said, it's easier for us to approach individual entrepreneurs or smaller types of stores primarily because we still don't really have the sense of data to support that we're a growing population that needs these additional services that we don't already have. And so that's the biggest, that and the median income have been the biggest obstacles we've seen in approaching people and seeing if they want to come and start a business in Trinidad.
If you could tell me how far off in that median income for now to where we need to grow.
I always lose five thousand dollars when I talk to them. If they could see like a growth of five thousand dollars in our, yes.
No.
Oh, sorry.
Do you think that's a possibility of raising that with the?
The mine? Possibly. I, I, I don't, I actually don't know what their salaries are there or anything like that. I heard that they're better than the average, but I am not the best at math and have not figured that out.
And I'll give you some additional information in a bit. I heard the data that might boost that as well.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that it would be great. I think that right now there even half a vacant space out at the Trinidad Plaza where we might go to house a business like that. Because beyond that, that's going to be the other opportunity basis. A lot of the spaces around town are filling up, which is really great, and I'm really happy to see it. But a lot of those places will require us to put in new infrastructure. And so that's something we're going to have to consider if we do start seeing that substantial growth. Do you all have any questions?
Certainly.
No, Wally, you answered my questions in our radio interview this afternoon, so pretty much everything you spoke about, I heard. So thank you for the interview today.
No problem. Thank you, Wes. Great.
How do we hit on Sarah Dixon's email or list? Because I'm a, we have a business license, but I never did it.
I wonder if your email blocks it for some reason, but I will double check and make sure that you all are.
Yeah.
And it should come from TrinidadEconomicDevelopment@gmail.com.
Okay. I'll check it and see. It's funny when you say natural grocery, but our median income is high enough because I guess they haven't seen what we're all paying to regular grocery stores. We can do that, natural groceries. Really? Is there any possibility of getting another national grocery store chain there?
I, I, I think that there is. I'm not, like I said, it's going to be difficult until we can give them some sort of quantitative reason for why we need one. I mean, like I said, it did show in that we're losing money from people leaving our community.
Money, absolutely.
But without them seeing like the type of growth that a community is normally looking for, they struggle to justify it.
When they do the census, because Trinidad proper isn't growing, I mean, it is, but not at the rate that the outlying areas are, do they take that into consideration? Do they take a market census of the whole area except instead of Trinidad proper?
Well, I will say that might actually be part of the reason that we're showing that we lose eighteen million per year is because in our study, we didn't do any markets. Where we went from, I think Clayton north, Lawsonburg south, and pretty far out east and west because there's no other comparable community in those spaces to put it to. And that is the figure that we used when we came up with that.
So the population, it increases the population, but it lowers the median. Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, I, that has nothing to do with median income. Median income is just what they find online when they look at what people are making here. What I'm saying is that that might, that I think that that would be a more reasonable way for them to look is to not just look at Trinidad as itself. However, as far as the population growth, Los Angeles County is also not growing in population according to the census. And so it would actually have to be extending beyond just the county to what we kind of deemed as that market area of where we see people coming from about groceries here.
The bad part about that, I'm going to conjecture, is that if you look at the census percentage that people had signed in to the census is relatively low.
Yeah. That's, that's what I think is the case too, that we are growing, just less people are wanting to tell the government where they are.
Yeah. Have you gotten, one more question. Have you gotten any bites on any of the spaces that comes?
Honestly, I get, we have a lot of people interested in it. The thing is, we're still hiring a leasing agent to actually lease it out. That was part of our grant was we received funding to support a direct leasing agent for two years. And we put out a, and we put out a request for proposals to fill that need. And we got some, we have two applications in for it. But then the chair of our oversight board, which we need to interview those candidates, caught COVID. And so we had to cancel that meeting. And then, yeah, so we're actually interviewing that person on Thursday. And hopefully we will have somebody who's out leasing them and we can start leasing the spaces. But like I said, I've actually, we've gotten a lot of calls, a lot of interest. And I think as soon as they put now leasing signs in the windows there and start actually marketing it out, they're going to find a lot of people interested in those cases.
You have any, I kind of care, I mean, care, sorry. Ask, get your name right when you say.
This is name terrible.
Here you covered a lot of what I might ask you about too. And, but I also want to know, what, what, besides grocery stores, are there any other industries that you're targeting that would be medium-sized employers?
I, we've been talking, and I've been talking with Ron at the college who's been trying to attract sort of this tech-based concept. And the biggest concern there is internet connection. And so that's one that we've been looking at. We've been talking with different people who have approached us, like the furniture store down in Raton is considering opening a location up here. But honestly, groceries and a lot of food-based stuff has been more of our direct target that we've been going at. I, I think that there might be some potential for manufacturing, but at the same time, the struggles that we have there is our location to an airport and our really just the staffing needs that people are seeing everywhere. And I don't think there's as many people looking to expand right now because they're struggling to staff just the spaces they have already.
Are we coordinating anything with the county, its economic development people?
I can't say that I have been working very closely with the county recently. I had in the past been looking at the Walt Bolden of Cog, but that with him leaving, that connection is kind of broken down a little bit and probably needs to be rebuilt. But, and then there are some projects that I have discussed briefly with the county about some stuff they're trying to do in the airport, which I think would be great, but they, they don't actually have anyone at the county who directly does economic development work. And so there, there isn't really that one person to be the counter contact over there.
I, I think that would be a good thing if we could develop something with them, whoever, even if it's Door Camp, to talk with them and get them thinking about ways that we can work together to draw more people to the area. Because there's certainly more developable space out there. Is, is housing another problem that you're finding in trying to attract employers?
I, I don't, none of the business owners that have come to town have really complained to me about that being a huge issue. And it's something I hear about all the time and something that I see on social media, people looking for a place and not being able to find it. I do think in most cases those people do find it after they spend a little bit more time looking. And, and I do think the housing costs are going up, which is being difficult from certain demographics. But other than the mine, that has not been a major complaint of any of the other business owners I know that have located to Trinidad.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a question about the gravel cycling. Did you guys look at the number of attendees and what kind of revenue that brought in last year? How can we have more gravel events going forward in 2022?
I'm actually going to do the smart thing, I hope, and let Jared answer that question. I, I actually did look at, I, I, I don't have any like financial reports on what kind of traffic I drove into town. I will say that looking at the YouTube views of the gravel video that we made, it's gotten thirty thousand and like the year we've had it, it's, the word is definitely getting out there. I, I actually had to give a report to the state wide internet portal authority last week on that glance that we got from them. They caught me to dig into some of what, what we got out of that. And there were publications and six national Viking magazines about this gravel guide and Trinidad deeming itself as the destination of come ride gravel. So I don't have like the financial benefits figured out at this point, but.
Maybe do a couple of those down in a year's time. It seemed like a big boost for the one, it's kind of a bump to.
Yeah. And honestly, I'm just interested in seeing our tax revenue wasn't, and it's difficult to compare to 2020, of course, but like in October compared to in years past. Because I, I've only been here for a few years, but that was a very busy October, it seemed to me. I talked to many business owners who said that it was the busiest that they've ever seen. We appreciate it. Yeah.
Wally, my apologies, my apologies for having you step out. I'm, I was encouraged to hear about the natural grocers. I think something like that would be super nice for the area. I did, I have a question. If, if we have interest, if we're approached by people from out town, would you be the best point of contact for them to reach out to for help with establishing a business? I mean, and use the term call.
Yeah, I, I, no, I think so. I think that I can definitely point them, I, the thing is, a lot of people come asking what money do you have? What grants do you have? Right now, we don't really have any grants for businesses looking to start in town or businesses struggling in town. We do have a loan program that is available through O P I where people can borrow money at a low interest rate. But beyond that, there isn't a lot financially that you can do. But yeah, as far as telling them the right people to talk to, pointing them in the right direction, letting, yeah, mainly just connecting them with the pieces that they need to start their business.
Right. I don't, I don't know the steps that would be taken to do this, but I wonder about the viability of industrial supporting businesses. Back when we had, say Pioneer here and X T O, there was a number of support industries that helped those supply those companies like Fastenal, Kimball Midwest, Dean Out, businesses like that.
Okay.
And as the mine is picking up and it seems that, on, on, the indication is that gas extraction is also picking up. I wonder if there'd be a way to reach out to those support industries and advertise to them. I mean, I can't imagine they know that. But, but you know, we're out in the mine, we're out in those industries. If we could build or encourage those industries to come back, we would probably have the customer base to sell to again. And it'd be added jobs, at least it's some food for thought.
I, no, I definitely had to learn more about it. That was before my time and I, I'm not even sure like kind of what products they were providing and stuff like that.
It's mainly like hardware stuff.
Okay.
Then the last thing I have, this, last Friday, we did conclude interviews. I shouldn't say we, I should say South Central Council of Government concluded interviews and made a selection. And the new director did actually accept, we had a meeting with the directors. And there's, there's a lot of positive energy there. I think, I think that the selection was really positive. Her name is Jennifer Oliver. She is with, I forgot, somewhere in Utah. And she should be here starting late March. So obviously we would make that introduction, but I think that'd be something to feel behind, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Ideally, that's when the biggest struggle is that they, they just had an interim person filling that position. So I think, I'm excited to do that. So that's a very update.
The last name was Oliver, how do you spell that?
Oliver? I'll send it to you.
Okay.
I'll send you that.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I know we were talking about bringing stuff in and that. And I noticed we don't mention anything about Monument Lake and the golf course. And those are two really big assets for Trinidad. Is there any way we can push that, like we're pushing the bike racing and the gravel deals?
Absolutely.
Because I haven't seen anything about that, my teeth. Those are really big assets for us and if we can get some stuff working on that, maybe we can get hold of the back to Monument Lake and work with him and, and get something really positive going for spring.
I heard something about that.
If you weren't such an old creep, you'd get on the internet. Facebook has all kinds of stuff.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the city itself here.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I will say that we, I definitely talked with Sarah, our communications person, about getting the word out more about these municipal-owned properties.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, I mean, we've talked about all this, but we haven't talked about any of that in our talk court. She's one of the nicest.
Yeah. No, I, I agree, and it's underutilized.
You know, Wally, we're, from what I see, we're in the chicken and egg thing here. And what I mean by that is we've got businesses that we need to attract here. We need people to be able to use here. We don't have the resources here in town. So that's what I mean, is that, is that we, we don't have the, what I would call the staple and anchor businesses. We're talking about the grocery store.
Yeah.
We're talking, and I know you've been talking hopefully with the furniture store, clothing store. And I believe that furniture store, I go with the, the grocery store, but there's other small grocery stores out there. There's that one in Balsamburg, I can't remember the neighborhood. But I understand that about a couple of years ago, they actually looked at Trinidad. I'm not sure what the reason, but I think that's the one. What I'm getting at here is that we need, and I'm not sure if you're doing this, is when, do you have a strategy when you're looking at these businesses to be able to give them the selling points of Trinidad? Give them the, the analysis, like you were talking about the loss of eighteen million dollars. And you take, you pull out the grocery and this is how much we estimate that we're losing.
Yeah.
In grocery business to say, this, this is, this was pooled. And this is what you, they share reason to come to Trinidad for. Develop a good selling, you know, you need to become a good salesman. So really, that's what this amounts to. And that between you and Sky, I think that's where you come in here. And of course, we as a council, we're, we're part of that too, if any one of us to be part of that. I'm not sure any one of us. If you need one of us to be part of that, I'm sure any one of us would be willing to talk to you guys about that. As far as any financial help, is there any money within the art club money or infrastructure money that would help maybe draw some of these people over here? That would be the other thing.
I think that's a possibility. The thing is, I think we're, I, really, that's gonna be a decision for you all. Because I, when we've talked about it since in the past, I know that some people have been less polarized than others. And the fact, and I think part of it comes with long time businesses being upset that we're offering all this support to new businesses that are coming. But yeah, and I think that if you all feel that it should be a priority to create funds for something like that, then we can possibly do that.
I'm looking at maybe is there any money through the art club funds or the, I'm not sure if there's anything available there or not. That would be something to look at, because it gives us a reason to do that. You know, it's interesting that you said that we're off about five thousand dollars in that median income. With all of the salary increases that have been going on, not like the city. I mean McDonald's, what they're paying, having to pay their employees. The mine, I think their range is what in the mid fifties to high fifties and possibly in Longmont, some of them. So I think that's beginning to raise that median income.
I, I love it.
Up to those levels.
Yeah.
And something that, you know, I think that you mentioned, Eric, was about these other businesses to support like the mine. I think that's really important, to reach out to the mine and say, do you anticipate seeing any additional support businesses that we can help you with? You know, or if you are attracting, can we, you know, are you willing to sit down and talk to them? To show them what we have here in Trinidad to help bring them here? I think that's what you're talking about, and I think that's a good point that you brought up. It was interesting today that we, I had, Mr. Valentine and I, we listened in with, they have a monthly meeting with the mine. And listened in today, and it was interesting that the railroad that they're gonna be putting in, they are actually going to be contracting with a company that's going to own the railroad. And with that, they will be having additional employees. They might have, you know, years back when the C W, I think that's called.
Yeah, C W.
C W Railroad, they had, I don't know, six, eight, ten, maybe employees. And you know that those salaries are going to be in the upper end. So these are all things that happen. You're saying that the gas industry is starting to show some sign of life again, you know? So I think that we, you know, clothing stores, you know, we're looking at, well, I've been saying this, those are the, what I call staple and anchor businesses that I think that we need to try to target somehow. So that we need to be attracted here. And I think that's something we need to look at.
Yeah. I will say, I have approached clothing stores, like we approached Ross. And we did all this through that Buxton program that we were applied of. And they, for Ross, they said that we just don't have a big enough population size. And we, we are bringing some clothing stores to town, but they're, they're small. They're independently owned, like this Tenpenny is opening up here this month. It's just, like I said, until they start seeing that development, it's hard for us to pull any bigger chain clothing stores and stuff like that.
What about somebody like the Morices? They're usually a little lower. Because I know there's, they're in some smaller communities. So I mean, these are the type of things I think that maybe, how do we research, how do we find these?
Who's the right fit?
You know, how do we find these out first and then go after them and say, we're interested in you.
And that is what that Buxton program was about, was it would seem, you could type in like any business and see what towns are they in. And then through that, you could see like, oh, is that one comparable to Trinidad? And that's honestly why we approached natural grocers over Whole Foods or Sprouts or anything, because we looked and none of them had adjusted, even in Pueblo, much less Trinidad. And, and so there are things like that, obviously, yeah. And we did create a package to send to these folks that included that market analysis. So these are the things that we have and that we have done in the past and will continue to do. Because like you said, we are seeing some growth with new higher paying jobs that might offer those salaries. So we'll continue to do so. I, I think the biggest struggle right now is just what it has been with the problem with workforce and finding like employees to fill these positions. A lot of businesses are less excited to develop, could grow into new places now. They might be worried about those type of things. But I do agree, I think, I'm very optimistic about that.
Now, on some of these possibilities that are out there, that we find some that we need. And that would be with Mr. Valentine and to say, you know, I've got somebody of Warred Ever or Amarillo or someplace that, you know, let's go visit them, let's take them more active, let's sit down with them and they talk, they look to be a selling job.
Yeah.
I think that's really where the face to face contact a lot of times can make a big difference.
I absolutely agree with that.
I'm, you know, I'm supportive of that, so.
Cool, I appreciate it.
Anything else?
One last question.
Go ahead.
What's the number for the employment for the mine? I don't know if you have the answer to that one.
I do not.
What was that number again, Mike? I know they had seventy seven, but then they've talked about over a hundred and two. I'm not sure what. There are seventy one, I think it said, seventy one total employees right now.
And in a recent conversation with Kayla Torres at the mine, she said that she projects within, within the year to be closer to two hundred.
And I said, I know that that median income that you're talking about was in that mid fifty range to sixty thousand, I guess.
I think you just remember that'd be a great selling point, just the hard number.
Yeah.
And that's why I've always said, been saying this for the last year, you know, we're on this increase of jobs and other stuff going on, and now is the time to really, really get after it, you know? Rather than waiting for it to bottom and we're trying to find it, and now is the time to get it accomplished.
I appreciate all the work that you're doing.
One more question, sorry. What are the workforce deficiencies that they're not finding? Is it not enough young people, not enough trained people? What's the?
Well, and for that, I just mean in general, like there are just less people working right now than there was two years ago. Like you, I just by talking to those businesses in town, they're having a lot more of a difficult time finding staff to work at their establishment.
So not necessarily people with certain kinds of background or degrees or experience, just anybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is interesting, if you look at the national trend that came on last week, the numbers were huge. So the last month, the numbers of jobs that were created, but yet the increase, the unemployment rate actually increased. And they think the reason why is now there were so many people during this COVID time period that dropped out of the market. And now they're beginning to come back into the market. So I think that's where maybe now there might be some more people wanting to work.
Okay.
Thank you, Wally.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Wally.
Thanks, Wally.
Jared, you're up.
Wally took all your time, you only have three minutes.
All right. Mayor members of the council, I didn't have an opportunity to give these out to you. You may have received an email of some of this information before, but just want to be sure everybody's looking on the same page, so. Pass this out to everybody.
Are you gonna grade these out?
No, you can grade these. So mayor, members of the council, it's a great opportunity to be here. Kind of ironic, this is a couple of days ago, February first was the anniversary of the, I'm not necessarily saying the formation of the Trinidad Office of Outdoor Recreation. That was formed before, but it was my first day on the job, so I consider it the first day that the doors of the Office of Outdoor Recreation were open. So I find it quite appropriate that it's a opportunity to come and give you a year report of what I've been up to. I say I because I am the only member of the department, so it is an office of one. And so before you, just some information, a little bit about the Trinidad Office of Outdoor Recreation. What the vision and the mission and the objectives of the department are. Just to give you an idea of what it is that, that you have created and what it is that you as a counselor are trying to do to an Office of Outdoor Recreation. And then the second page is the year in review. I sent that out as an email to, I think I got everybody on there, but if not. Kind of the things that have gone on and have been accomplished this past year. And then on the back of that page is, or are, the goals of the Office for 2022. There's more than that, that was just kind of a very impromptu list of goals and objectives that we would like to accomplish. So a little bit about the office. Our mission, or the mission, is to, to enhance the economy of Trinidad and the quality of life of Trinidad residents, visitors and regional residents by providing and promoting quality outdoor recreation assets, programs and events. So that's kind of our broad umbrella, what it is that, that we are trying to do there. And as an Office of Outdoor Recreation, there are several state offices of outdoor recreation. Colorado happens to have a state Office of Outdoor Recreation. And their guiding principles are what are known as the Confluence Report. And as an Office of Outdoor Recreation, even though we are at a municipal level, we've adopted those same guiding principles just to be in accordance or be in sync with what other outdoor offices or recreation are doing. So that's that bottom part of that first page. So what I've been doing the last year is trying to fill those different emissions by the objectives listed there. Inventorying and promoting our recreation assets along with developing some new ones. Creating and supporting existing outdoor recreation programming through organizations. As a, as an office, we don't offer our own programming yet, but there are many organizations within the community that do offer outdoor programming and we want to support and promote those. To create, support, develop signature events. One of them that we have had the fortunate of being given to us is the RAD, which we're all familiar with. That's obviously not something that we created, the Lifetime Fitness. Through the efforts of Wally and some of the economic development endeavors, they saw Trinidad as a place they could host one of their Lifetime Fitness events. And we are very fortunate to have them here. So that, some other events. And then the fourth one is to develop a marketing campaign that promotes all these outdoor recreation assets, whether it be programming or programs, events or assets to the world to let everyone know that, hey, Trinidad is an outdoor recreation destination. And that is what we want people to know, to believe, to embrace, whether as a community member or as a visitor. We want to be known throughout the world as an outdoor recreation destination. And just kind of as a side note, by the creation of the office, I don't know through what networks word got out, that Trinidad created an Office of Outdoor Recreation. And a gentleman from, from Wyoming, the, I can't name the town off the top of my head, I should, is the headquarters for the National Outdoor Leadership School, contacted me and said, wanted information on how this office was created. Because they want to create the same thing there in that town on a municipal level.
Did you tell them it was just a lot of permission on Tim Chrisler?
Yeah, I told you, if you're a Tim Chrisler in your neighborhood, you'll have whatever you want. So that's kind of, I mean, I can go through and give you a whole bunch of lists of things that we are currently working on. And outdoor recreation is a very hot topic, not on all sorts of levels, from the national level, to the state level, down to municipalities. It is one thing that, that particularly in rural communities is being embraced as a stabilizing factor, stabilizing factor in the economy. A lot of rural communities have been based on extraction industries, the mining, oil, gas, logging, those kind of things. And those tend to have a very peak and valley, big boom and bust. Most of these rural areas have these outdoor assets that don't get utilized. And so it is the push from the feds down to the state to develop these outdoor assets as a way of driving the economy and to stabilize, they don't have that up and down. There's more, as long as they're there and we promote them, we can have the benefit of these assets in the long term and not have to deal with the boom and bust of the different kind of other economic factors that come along. So just some projects that we're working on right now. So we have engaged a real estate attorney to help with land issues along what was been done, the Old Sopris Trail. That's the trail from town to Trinidad Lake State Park. That'll be a connector trail. That project, from what I understand, has been held up for decades almost now, just due to not knowing property ownership and property ownership issues. So we've recently engaged a real estate attorney to help get to the bottom of that so we can hopefully be able to move forward on that trail and get that connection to Trinidad Lake State Park. The Water Works Building, we have contracted with an architect firm to do some design work on the old Water Works Building. From what I understand, it's the second oldest standing building in town and converting that to the center of outdoor recreation. CPW is very interested in being part of that as part of their youth outreach. And for one, that's a fabulous old building, it's got great architecture. I think it's great that the city considered doing something with it. And being where it's located downtown, right off the river, right along the Riverwalk, has a great, great location for a center for outdoor recreation. We're working on, when I say we, I have to clarify that this is, being a department of one, there's a lot of collaboration. I cannot take credit for all these things. These are all things that I do in partnership, working with other departments to accomplish. Working on a grant to put a multi-use trail along Santa Fe, Santa Fe Road Drive, Santa Fe, whatever that road that goes up that direction, Old Santa Fe Trail. And that would be our connection from town to exit eleven, eventually to Fisher's Peak. And that is going to be the only connection. Of course, we're interested in exploring as many trails as possible and other potential connections, but this would be a multi-use, a pedestrian biking paved trail that would make that connection from town to exit eleven. And then on to Fisher Peak. Wally mentioned the Riverwalk lighting project. We are very excited about that. I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to rock the Riverwalk from Cedar down to Linden. It is in the process of being lit up, which makes it one very nice, very swingy walk. And a lot less scary, so much safer. And there's plans to extend that to another grant from Linden down to the Cape Carsten Cut Off. So that section of the Riverwalk will be lit also, making it obviously friendlier, more inviting, I can say, for everyone to use. Still involved in the River Visioning Project. Every cool town, every cool Colorado town, and it might be in every cool town, has a Riverwalk. Trinidad wants to be a cool Colorado town and as such, we want to explore the possibility of having a very nice Riverwalk. The economic, Wally can speak to this probably better than I, of the economic impact of having a, a very nice. I'm sure we're familiar with the Pueblo Riverwalk, London Gold and other places, Zalida, Goo La Vista all have these fabulous Riverwalks. Great place for the community to gather, shops start to spring up, different cafes, eateries, all this engaging the river as part of recreation and part of economic development. And so that is still in the mix. We're still working on continued development at the Wormhole with additional trails there. The sand volleyball court, everybody's probably seen the pile of sand, they've been there for a very long time. It is my holy gift, my joke was a Santa Claus, my holy Santa Claus to play sand volleyball. Santa Claus didn't get to play sand volleyball, we should have finished that project. But that project will be done in 2022, I promise, along with the. Along with the expansion and developments of Disc Golf out at the Southside Community Center. So there's also the Parks and Rec Board has, and I believe you have allocated a million dollars towards the covering of the pool. That is a conversation that has been going on and ongoing. And with some of my previous expertise and my previous place of employment, I happen to know a lot about pools. And so helping to move that project in the direction to see if it's feasible and if so, how so. So that is kind of a really quick, if going over what the things that we've been up to. Still working on, well, we have regular meetings now with Lifetime Fitness and planning for the RAD. I think we can all agree that last year's RAD was a little disorganized. And they'll be the first to admit that that was the case. So we're going to be sure that that is not what happens this year. And planning meetings are already in process to make sure that that comes off a lot better. The Pony Express 160 is planning on adding an additional day with a route that goes from town out east. So we'll have a two-day Pony Express event. And then I'm working on rebranding it and bringing what is now known as the Purgatory Four Adventure Race. It had been the master of the mountains, it'll now be the Purgatory Four. And they'll incorporate New Mexico and Colorado to this re-approach to an adventure race. So that should be very cool too. Otherwise, as Wally said, we kind of found about this on Thursday. So I didn't get a chance to polish my pony and shampoo my dog, so I don't have much of a dog and pony show for you today. So that's, happy to field any questions you might have.
You've done well, thank you.
My first one, he already answered, it was about the property ownership issue with Old Sopris Trail. But could you elaborate a little bit about the Bird Scooters?
Yes, absolutely. So Bird, for those of you who may not be aware, is a scooter company where you.
Ride share.
Right.
Ride share.
Ride share. Wally knows more.
Scooters around, the people can rent to get around town as fun and transportation.
Exactly. So scooters are made available, an individual, a company in town would be a local representative here. They would maintain and take care of the scooters. And then a private individual, you know, the credit card can rent that scooter, ride it around. And then they'll leave it and then the person can then get it. Initially, it had several discussions amongst city staff about the pros and cons. And actually, Raton has agreed to embrace Bird. And so our opinion here in Trinidad was to see how it went in Raton and kind of weigh, see from their experiences as something that is, we would consider here. Things are a little different here in Trinidad, our roads are narrower, they're not as wide as Raton. There's some, so right now, it's kind of been put on the back burner, just gathering more information if it's something we really want to embrace here.
And have they come to Raton yet?
No.
Yeah.
No.
It goes off the scooters that start off fire.
I hope not either.
So there's a lot of grant dollars out there for Progen, there's a lot of money out there?
There's a lot of money out there.
Progen.
From all, yeah, from all sorts of different sources. One of the biggest sources is CPW. They tend to get federal funds that are allocated to them, but then are, they administer for trail construction. GOCO, the Great Outdoors Colorado is also a great funder for those kinds of projects. And even the Build Back Better, some of these ARPA funds that are coming down. Along with the creation of the Great American Outdoors Act has opened up some funding. All those are federal funds and so they're sometimes difficult to navigate. Fortunately, although I think we're all tired of the planning processes that we've all been going through for what seemed to be a very long time, once we've accomplished those, we will be in a very good position to apply for all those funding. Cause all those require some sort of planning process, some sort of project. You know, the term shovel ready, they want to see those kinds of things. So hopefully, as we finish these planning processes, we will have those projects in queue so that they can be a shovel-ready project and be funded.
And the Bermano Brunch, I mentioned that three or four times on the radio one week and it was already filmed.
Yes, I agree with that, thank you very much. So the Rayho Brunch, it's an opportunity to go to Bermano. It is a fundraiser for the Purgatory Four, helps put on that event. It's a great relationship with Bermano, they may know, unless you have a reason to go to Bermano, you pretty much can't go. And so this is a reason for, as us local community members who are neighbors with Bermano, have an opportunity to go and have a brunch, tour the grounds and get to enjoy that experience. And it's a, as you said, filled up with two weeks this year. So the waiting list is growing. I tell folks, if you don't get to go this year, if you're on the waiting list, you get first ride refusal next year. So that's guaranteed to go.
Great Mother's Day present.
Yes.
I went to that a couple of years ago, when you did it with Raton.
Yeah.
And it's very nice, it was beautiful. The weather wasn't good that day, but it's, for anybody that bought tickets, it's well worth every penny. Is it, I'm thinking that now with the trails and the hiking and dirt biking and things like that, that's, that's the wave of the future as far as outdoor recreation. So are you getting any hits on our like golf course? Do you get any inquiries or is that kind of waning in other outdoor?
So that is a very good question. And the answer is yes. Traditional golf has, is gradually for lack of recruitment, lack of youth involvement, is a sport of dating out. There's a, I can't remember the exact number of Disc Golf courses that are being constructed in comparison to regular golf courses. Disc Golf is phenomenal and it's climbing. And many regular golf courses are incorporating Disc Golf as part of their course to encourage a younger element to come to the course and maybe while they're there, they'll pick up the golf moment and do that.
Is that a possibility with our course?
It is a possibility. It's something that I've been in talks and working with Twisted Cedars, Johnny Okun out there who has his.
I've saw his Disc Golf.
And I don't know if it's something that we necessarily maybe make permanent in our course. Our, the Trinidad course is a little different kind of layout. But it's something that we could use temporary baskets or they call them holes for baskets in Disc Golf. And we could have tournaments there and then take the baskets down and still maintain the course. But that's the purpose of developing a dating hole course out at the Southside Park is to have multiple courses, encourage people to come and have multiple day tournaments. Cause just with between this one we'll have here, Johnny's Twisted Cedars, the Whistle Stop and the Country Club in Raton, we have four Disc Golf courses in our region that we could put on multi-day tournaments and keep people here for three or four days just playing Disc Golf.
Where's the sand volleyball court at? I haven't seen your sand.
Well, good, I don't want you to.
Oh, it's there.
Last no, we've seen you. No, it's right next to the Rotary Pavilion at the south end of Central Park. That's where.
Big amounts of sand.
Big amount of sand. Hopefully, the college is very interested, they're talking about having a sand volleyball team as part of their athletic program. And their sand volleyball is very not good. And are excited to maybe be able to work out some mutual use agreement with the city to use.
They're just like on a cliff.
Yeah, there's this, that's not what they're saying, it's about that, it's got like boulders.
I have a request, Mr. Thurman and I met years ago, about five years ago, we were up in Abachi.
Oh, Bochi, yes.
Bochi, yeah. What are our chances of getting those Bochi courts updated?
Possibly getting the, you know, Bochi, I guess a.
League.
League, but a, a club.
Yeah.
They have it statewide in most states.
Absolutely. Well, I think right here, the two.
Founding members.
Founding members, they love, why not?
Yeah, he beat me, really bad, I'm not worth a darn, but you're telling, I know, isn't that sad?
Well, I would admit that they seem to be underutilized because I can pretty much see them all the time and I don't see anybody ever playing.
Well, the one on the right is totally unusable. There's only one and that one on the left, if you're pushing towards Simpson's wrist, the one on the left is if you, but the one on the right is.
Well, I think that is possible, justified use of marijuana, but that would make those course usable. It's a shame to have an asset that gets underutilized or neglected. So I think that's something that we could look into.
Alright.
Absolutely, Fred.
Nothing, I think you're doing a really good job there.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it, sir.
I think you're doing a spectacular job and it's amazing everything that's happened in a year. I've always been concerned about what is specifically targeted for kids in this community and whether what you have that's.
That is a fabulous question. So that is actually the conversation I'm going to have with CP, or Crystal Drellings with CPW tomorrow. Is how to develop a youth engagement piece for outdoor recreation. The Trinidad Youth Club is just gearing themselves back up. And so I know Pat Walsh from the other side of the hill. He is fabulous at developing outdoor programs for youth. And so I'm very excited to partner with him and to start supporting his programming to get more kids out. 4H is good, our scouting program doesn't exist anymore, which is very much a shame because that is one fabulous venue or asset to get kids engaged in the outdoors. But I think overall, it's going to be, and this is primarily the conversation for tomorrow is to see how in partnership with CPW, how, cause she, Crystal has some great youth programs that she's developed out of Trinidad Lake State Park, which by her own admission, she feels the schools haven't embraced it. That her programs have been underutilized. So our conversation is how we can get the community involved, take advantage of programs that already exist and then develop programs that will attract more kids to, in fact, I was actually just on a meeting with members of OED, the Outdoor Economic Development and.
Office of Economic Development and International Trade.
Right on cue. About developing a curriculum, not so much a curriculum, but a requirement. I don't like to necessarily use the word requirement, part of the education system where any student enrolled in public education would be required to, for examples, in New Mexico, you have to do a certain number of hours of community service in order to graduate. The equivalent here would be engage in some sort of outdoor recreation pursuit. So that when this individual graduates, they're already connected to the outdoors in some facets that they want to. And then that creates one better outdoor stewards, one individuals who are connected to the outdoors who want to engage in those lifelong pursuits. And as any outdoor rep business knows, if you get them young, you have them for the rest of your life. And so it helps with that economic development part of creating customers forever. When you teach them how to hike, bike, canoe, fish, swim, whatever that is. So it was an interesting conversation, it was just at the beginning. They're currently hiring a new Director of Office of Outdoor Rec, his name is Connor. I'm reprising Nathan Faye and he should come on and order things at the end of the month.
Can that also include activating our community center a little bit more, like kids' basketball leagues? I know that's indoors, but outdoors, but it seems like that's underutilized.
It is, and I think unfortunately, what's great, there's been obviously a lot of comms to COVID. And I think that's been one, is all those kinds of youth programs took a hit. But because it's been so long, there's been this desire to be active again. People got tired of sitting on the couch watching, binge watching Netflix for hours at a time. But there is this desire. In fact, if you talk to Lifetime, if you talk to the Pony Express 160, people engaging in these events like doubled and tripled because people are wanting to go out. So I think with a little bit of promotion, the same thing could be with the community center. It could be used for as long, you know, as these restrictions start to lift. Yeah, it'd be great to see that place jam packed with cars all the time.
Yeah, Jared, what's your question?
Chatterly.
Chatterly, that's right, I am the liaison for you guys.
Just so you know.
Just so you know, friends with Tim and I know Rusty pretty well. And looking at the layout here, this is, all this stuff looks very attainable. It doesn't look far-fetched and out of the, out of a wheelhouse in Trinidad. I would like to see these events though increase, like the more exposure we get down in Trinidad, the more we could send it back to where everybody came from. And that starts the trickle-down effect with housing and everything else. What projects do you have right now that are going to be completed in maybe the next year or so?
Definitely sand volleyball. Along with the Disc Golf, some of the other ones are kind of like, so we are to submit a concept paper for the GOCO Planning Grant, it's due February 21st, or 21st. If that goes well, we can submit a full application due in March. If that goes through and we get awarded funds, we can begin that planning process to eventually apply for a GOCO Centennial Grant, which would open up, I've heard in the neighborhood, for five to 10 million dollars, which would then allow us to do a whole lot of projects. So in the near time, that's our goal, is to apply to those monies to then accomplish some of these other tasks that are down the line. So like the, as much as I'd like to see the Center for Outdoor Recreation open tomorrow, that's probably a project that's going to be, you know, several years down the road and coming to fruition. Same with the Old Sopris Trail, some of these are really big projects that are going to need some of those shorter-term goals to eventually allow us to achieve those big goals two, three years down the road.
So you're a one-man show right now, right?
One-man show right now.
Okay.
Keith, look at my washing.
That's okay, but let's stay in touch.
Absolutely, I'll see you at the meetings.
For sure.
Again, I apologize, I have an issue going, if anyone asks this question, just please tell me.
Yeah.
For full disclosure, I enjoy mountain biking, so I have a tendency towards that. But I mean, you know, when you look at Fruta, they have an unbelievable resource. I mean, you go over there, what does, I mean, any given day, there's at least like 150, 160 mountain bikers. Even if those people are there on a day trip, I mean, that's gotta be some dollars in town. So I think that's something that would be super nice to focus on. Is, at this point in time, is that something that is a high priority to try and develop that sort of attraction?
Yes, so there is a company called Six Pack Outdoors, they did a lot of the mountains bike trail construction from Amarillo, Medalladuro and some of those cities are theirs. They have been, the owner of that Six Pack Outdoor Company grew up here. He was, grandparents lived here, he knows Trinidad and now. He is wanting to come here and build mountain bike trails. So currently, Mike and I are in the process of trying to find where that could be and how that would really work out. But I think between the possibility of developing the mountain biking and really promoting what we have already developed with our gravel, you talk to the folks who came here for the RAD and they say our gravel, you know, gravel to me has always been, right? Gravel, you know, you've got gravel. Well, no, that is not true, there are certain levels of quality gravel and we have some of the best. So if we, and Wally's gravel guy, just so you know, it's like the example at the Colorado Tourism Office of how to do an adventure guide, they send that out to other places. I saw it as this is what other communities need to do to be kind of in the same league in comparison with Trinidad. So those guys get a big hand for what they've done. But I think if we develop and promote the mountain biking that we have here and across the border, really promote our gravel and make it, because every true adventure starts with a coffee shop and ends at a bar. really promote our gravel and make it, because every true adventure starts with a coffee shop and ends at a bar.
Yeah.
Have those, have those assets here, then we've gotta go in every direction. Because we don't want people to, you know, not have a coffee shop so they have a coffee somewhere else,
Yeah.
bike here, and then go have a restaurant, you know, go to eat. But I think we're accomplishing that. But I definitely think it's possible. I think as word gets out, I keep on telling people, keep an eye on Trinidad, because in three to five years, whether we think it's good or bad, that can be an argument, but we're gonna be a different place.
Well, and can I add one thing to that? The state park, they're talking about having nine miles of mountain biking trail by this time next year.
And those, and those trails would be designed for mountain biking?
Those would be multipurpose, but mountain bikes would be allowed on them. And, um, and then that six-pack one, that's, that has the potential to possibly happen within a year, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that could be one of those projects.
I'm excited to hear that, uh, I forget the name of the company, you said that, that designed-
Six Pack Outdoor.
Canyon.
Yeah.
Because I, I do not want this to be in any way, um, well, I think I've already said that. It's important that a trail that's intended to attract mountain bikers is designed for mountain biking. Because unless you can carry speed through a corner, it's, it's not a mountain bike.
Yeah, it's very fun. And you can, yeah, absolutely.
We, we have some great trails around here, but I think we need some that are specifically designed for that. Then you, you alluded to, um, New Mexico and other outlying areas. Um, and from your presentation too, it sounds as though the interconnectivity between areas is a high priority. Because, like you said, starting at a, um, coffee shop and ending at a bar, that's probably true. Um, but so, so is, uh, the ability to have, uh, you know, be regionally interconnected, so that, that's also high on the priority list, I would assume?
Extremely high, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because I think for the longest time, we have looked at, at the border as them and us.
Right.
And I think we need to think outside that box and think of us as, as we. I mean, we identify historically, culturally, a lot more with Raton than we do with Pueblo. And Raton identifies more with us than they do with Springer or Las Vegas, so I think together. And as I was telling somebody, you know, a family comes into town to check in the hotel for two days, and in two days, they've done everything there is to do in Trinidad. Well, do we wanna send them away? Absolutely not. We wanna say, you know what? There are some really cool things at Capulon. You go, you know, go over there, or, you know, take the Santa Fe Trail West and go check out Philmont and that stuff, and spend three or four days here instead of just two. That's why the things that, we are the regional hub. We want to embrace all those recreation assets, and no offense to anybody over there, but make them our own. And to promote them, that this, all those fun things that happen within an hour, hour and a half travel come out of Trinidad. Absolutely.
Let's hear what you have.
You know, I was just, what we're really talking about here overall is diversification of our economy here in Trinidad. That really is, from what I see, is the ultimate goal here. And last fall, I asked Erin, and she put together, I'm not sure if she saw that report that she put together, and we call the Trinidad Red, our readiness. And that would be something to give a red, pretty looking.
I have.
She put them up with some ideas and some stuff in there that is very important for her, for your information, for even the economic development. And, uh, but she did a really great job on that. And, uh, as we know, and I'm not sure if everybody knows, but, uh, the tourism industry brings in $25 billion, I think that's what it was last year, in the state of Colorado. So there is a huge amount, a huge amount of money, and that's what you're talking about. We need to be part of that.
Absolutely.
That's what we're going, we're looking at Trinidad become a destination where people like, for you, like you're saying, for people to stay here the extra day, or two, or three, or whatever it is. And I think that's what we're really looking at, and of course, like I said, we're looking at economic stabilization overall. That's what the, the whole, that's what the whole impact is going to be here. Uh, you know, with all the biking events, with the space recreation, people come in to, to explore and to see what we have locally, I think is what's really gonna drive this destination that we're really looking at here in Trinidad. Uh, you said that usually, we begin to utilize all of our assets. And if we start off pretty much, the big one, we could do. Second one, we wanna try and see if we can do something with our River bottom down here. The third item I think that we need to look at down the road is Simpson's Rest.
Absolutely.
I think that, that would be another component that, if we start to utilize the assets that we have, that's gonna keep people here longer. So that, if you go here one day, then you're another day, and somewhere else the next day. But the, uh, the, the, the funding, like you were talking about, you know, from GOCO, and I do know that, that I've been seeing in some of these other monies that are out there, whether it's through the ARPA money or whatever, but there are some additional things out there, and I think you're probably aware of it, that not get to leave them on board with you to explore some of those additional funding opportunities. Uh, because like I said, a thousand times, that there's money's out there, let's, let's, let's see what we can, uh, I know you're a one-man band, and you're doing a hell of a good job, from what I can see.
I appreciate it.
Congratulations for everything that you're, you're doing.
Thank you very much.
We're, we're at the cusp.
I think so. I honestly do. I think, like I said, Trinidad, after five years, and we will be, um, a force to be reckoned with.
Like I said, I think that what we have done is we have set the basis and the stage to move forward, to make this a destination. And I really think that, you know, hired new was probably as far as the tourism factor, as far as the, uh, recreational factor, the other person that can get this thing done. Looking at all just, I'll take this home and look at it a little bit deeper, and then keep track of a lot of this stuff that she's done. And I wanna thank you for, uh, all of your experience, vast experience, and all the effort that you've given us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I wanna, I wanna thank the, the council, and my interview for the position, it was just as a trail coordinator, and I appreciate your forethought in, in taking the idea of creating Office of Outdoor Recreation and really, you know, taking outdoor recreation to the next level in the city. The thanks and the kudos goes to you and the council for making that happen, so I applaud you for, for doing that.
We're a team.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Yeah, thanks, sir. Yes?
Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Mayor, for your support and, and all the things that you and City Council do. I just wanted to, you know, jump in on that, and it's $25 billion, 1.2 billion in local state taxes on tourism. That's how huge that is for us, $25 billion. It's crazy.
Well, that pretty much is the end of our work session. The rest, if you have anything else you wanna add, I think we can get on with it here. Yes, we do. There's been a request by one council member, I think five minutes worth for you.
Five minutes.
Let's, let's go take five minutes recess and I just-
This is the-
I'll give you a agenda real quick.
Hmm?
I'll give this real quick.
Yeah, good.